Are we supposed to do anything?
No, wait till they call us in that the meeting's open to everybody joining in from the outside.
All right, it looks like we have thirty-four people and it slowed down. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, September twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-one Board of Education Special Meeting. This special meeting is regarding facilities and potential consolidation. I'm going to go ahead and start the meeting with a call to order at four thirty-four P. M. And I'll go ahead and do a road call. When I say your name, board colleagues, just stay here. I'll start with Raquel Alvarez.
She's mic'd. You're muted up, Raquel.
Here, sorry.
It's okay, we're working that out. Mike Blessing?
Here.
Thank you. Eric Joyce?
Here.
And Eleanor Evans?
Here.
Okay, all five board members present and accounted for. So moving on to item one C. This is the adoption of resolution number eight for twenty-one, twenty-two, continuing Board of Trustees authority to hold virtual meetings pursuant to A B three-six-one.
I would move approval or is it a staff presentation?
No, unless you need further explanation, we can move to approval. This just gives the board the authority to continue meeting remotely. And we will bring this back at each board meeting so you can make the decision every thirty days for the next board meeting.
Thank you, Julie.
I'll move approval.
Have a first, a second, another second. Awesome. Any questions?
Yeah, does? It just says that state or local officials have recommended measures to promote social distancing. So as long as that's in place, technically, a state of emergency could be considered existing.
According to the governor, correct.
As long as the board's question? Yeah, as long as the board determines that there's a need to meet remotely and this stays in place, we just need to consider the item at each board meeting for the next board meeting. So for example, if there are any mitigation factors that aren't being followed at board meetings, such as people wearing masks, too many people at meetings unmasked, and the board feels it is not safe to convene, we can continue to meet remotely.
Yeah, just my opinion on this is I'm going to vote no because I don't think we should be voting to be virtual because there are members of the public that aren't following the minutes. I think we need to create a situation that is as safe as possible. And I just, I worry the most about us being able to have meaningful conversation and tripping up through digital means. So I'm going to vote no on this tonight.
Okay. Anybody else have a question, discussion?
Eric, I sit on three county boards and we've all voted yes to virtual meetings. Okay, so, and I think we've had some very meaningful conversations. In fact, I firmly believe on a personal level, I listen more intensely, you know, than I do in person. So it's something to consider. I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, I think we need to deal with the reality of the situation.
The only thing about conversation that makes it so much harder on here is that I just, there's the delay, there's the audio issues, and then I can't see my board colleagues when we're engaging in full discussion. So I understand, especially countywide, why bringing people together might be easier countywide. Anyway, that's my opinion.
Well, I can see you, so I'm happy.
All right. All right. If there's no more comments, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of voting, supporting item one C, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those not in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries for one. Moving on to item one D, this is a staff presentation on facilities and potential consolidation. I'll turn it over to Steph.
Dr. Norman, take it away. We have a follow-up to our last study session on facilities and potential consolidation. That was last month. If you'll go to the next slide, this is just a reminder of some of the reasons that we talked about consolidation. We gave the board complete information about declining enrollment and projections a few years out. We talked about and gave you a lot of information on the use of our facilities and how much space we have in our facilities. So we do have space for consolidation. This would help create budget efficiencies. We use the number of about one million dollars annually and ongoing, and it optimizes our resources, such as staffing, financial, and property that we own. So just picking up where we left off and moving into some, we were asked to bring back some additional information and some possibilities for consolidation. So we'll follow up on that information and then give you our recommendation, and then the board will engage in robust conversation, and we're looking for some direction this evening so that we can begin to have discussions with staff that would be impacted by this and community members. And one really important thing and why we're looking for direction to start moving forward on this is one of the things in staffing efficiencies is we really want to work to the best of our ability to ensure that no one loses their job during this consolidation. And if we know what facilities we're consolidating, we can work to, as people naturally leave the organization for one reason or another, we can hold positions in different ways. So we want to be very mindful of that, that this consolidation does not include anyone losing their job. Just it just involves consolidating schools and moving them together like we've done very successfully before. So I just wanted to point that out, that that is a priority. So with that, we'll jump over to Dr. Norman, who will proceed with the rest of the forty-eight, I believe, slides in the slide deck.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you. And we're going to go through some information upfront before we start looking at different scenarios so that I can set the stage, and you can have some of the working knowledge you need in order to navigate the conversations tonight. Where we're getting our information is from multiple sources. We use Davis Demographics, who are demographers. We had D L R, who did our Long Range Facilities Master Plan, conversations with principals, going through our contracts to talk about ratios, talking with our coordinators in the district. So I've gathered a lot of information from different sources, and I've actually been working on this all up until today to make sure I had the most accurate information. The first thing we're going to look at is a facility condition index score. And why this is important is because tonight we're talking about consolidation. And we're going to be looking at a few scenarios for school sites. And the school sites we're going to be looking at tonight involve Mission, Del Rio, Libby, Laurel, Reynolds, and Surfside. And so in looking at their index score, you get this score by looking at different components of a school site. School sites are built out into buildings, restrooms, and you go through and you look at a three-year, a five-year, and a ten-year cost for ongoing repairs, and you divide that by the total cost of replacement value. So it, and then in the end, it all comes together. So if you look at Mission, it has a one-point-two, which is really low, lower is better, up to a hundred percent. So that's a very good rating. It's one of the best ratings we have. Del Rio is a five-point-eight, which is good. Libby also is a six-five, very close, which is good. Laurel is a seven-nine. That was done some time ago. We redid that. That one's still in good condition. And then we have Reynolds and Surfside, and we're going to talk about those sites tonight as well, and those are both considered poor. So that sets kind of the stage for looking at the different facilities condition-wise. Now we're going to go through and talk about our students and capacity.
Dr. Norman, before you leave that last, can you go back to that last slide? What is, is the percentage of, is the hundred percent all the repairs we need to do in the next five years on that score?
It's basically like a hundred percent is the worst you could be. One-point-two is the best. And so if you're looking at Surfside, you're about a fourth way through the metric. That's according to D L R. I was just talking to them about it, about that before I came in, and that's how you get your percentages.
So Reynolds is already, is it sixteen? But it's like fallen, it's really in heavy need.
It is.
There could be a school that's up to a hundred percent.
Well, in talking to D L R, it looks like when we're on our scale, twenty-nine seems to be where we're maxing out. And so I'm going to clarify with that with him because Surfside also is a, is a site that we've all visited that we very much know needs to be addressed. And so in looking at this in context of just these schools, Surfside would certainly be the most needy, but I'll clarify that with D L R. That's a great question.
So this is Stacy. For a frame of reference, where would S L R or Jefferson be on that kind of score?
Sure. What I'm going to do to access that, I have another window up. I'll go in and I can pull that up right now by looking at our, the Long Range Facilities Master Plans on the website. So I'm just going to pull that up. And then I'll go to where it says facilities and conditions, and up top, S L R is a twelve-nine. And you asked for Jefferson also. And then if I go into Jefferson. Sorry, I needed back out one more. I apologize.
I think it's just the percentages that are confusing. If it was more of like an index score, it made more sense to me.
And that's what it's meant to be is an index score, but I'll get you the context from, I'll get you clearer, greater clarification. I'm just pulling up. Excuse me. Jefferson. So if I go to the facility conditions.
I think it's fifteen percent.
Yep, fifteen percent or forty-four million, seven eighty-four is the total.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
And that's before we're doing any kind of work. Okay.
So, so that does fall in line when we're looking at our sites that are in need of repair. If we're looking at Jefferson, that's at fifteen, Reynolds is at sixteen, and then we are doing S L R, which is at twelve. So that's also close.
I have a quick question. How do we get these numbers and where do they come from and how do we get the percentages?
Sure. If you go to the website where we have our Long Range Facilities Master Plan, at the top right-hand corner for every school, you can pull down the report. There's about a hundred-page report that walks you through the site, building by building, and piece by piece of the site, and it looks at what condition is it in? How much is it going to cost for repair over three years, five years, ten years? So it doesn't just do it by whole building. It breaks it down little by little. And so you can examine that report to go through what are your most expensive areas of the site in order to get your percentage. So it's the, the cost of repairs divided by the full replacement cost of that portion of the site, and then they put it all together to get you the whole site. That's a great question.
These are from their site walks that they did.
Correct. Exactly. And there's a narrative in that report. If it's, let's say I'm looking at Jefferson's. It's in the, it's right under the picture on the left, and it says View F C I Report. And so what I'm giving you today is just an overview so you can dive deep into those. Each school has a very long report that walks you through every building.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Those are great questions. Thank you. So now we're looking at the elementary school enrollment, and why I put colors on it is just to show you the sites that we're going to be looking at today. We have Laurel and Mission, and then we'll look at Reynolds and a few different scenarios. We're going to look at Reynolds if we were to move the T W B I into one school and the traditional program into the other. And then we're also going to look at merging Del Rio with Libby. The other schools are not colored because we're not going to be examining those today. I did list them. Usually I do everything alphabetical order because I was a teacher and that's how I do things. But I did not do it alpha order. What I did was I put them next to each other in terms of if we were going to consider sites. For example, Fusat and Nichols are both large sites. You're going to see two different columns. One says total enrollment and one says all programs. And I'm going to go into that in future slides and explain that in more detail. What does TK five enrollment look like versus all programs? And it's important that we look at them both ways. And then we have district capacity, and then the next slide, couple of slides, I'll get into that also. Okay, next slide. So another frame of reference is going to be our associated costs. We have modulars cost about two-hundred-and-ten-thousand. But if you need to put in infrastructure, electrical, water, it could be fifty to a hundred thousand dollars if, if that's not already there. If we were to rebuild Reynolds, the estimated cost is forty-nine million. If we were to modernize Surfside, that's seventeen million. There's a difference between rebuilding and modernizing. I know that you all know that, that basically Reynolds is modulars. It's, or it's just buildings that are in disrepair. We would have to totally rebuild that site. Surfside, we could modernize. We've done a lot of nice work, such as Mission and schools like that, would be a modernization. And then we have, if we were going to demo a site, it really depends on the size of the site. It would be between one and one-point-two million dollars to demolish it. And you do want to demo a site if you, because of security, and you have to keep an eye on it, and then there's vandalism. And so that's something we would want to consider. Next slide.
Can we go back just for a second?
Sure.
Because of location of Surfside, would that be considered a situation where you would need more security?
Potentially. It is, it is more easily accessible. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so let's go ahead and move into elementary programs. So when we're talking about elementary programs, we are looking at TK five general education. So that's available at all of our sites. And then we have the K five two-way bilingual immersion. That's only at Reynolds for these. I know it's also at S L R. But for what we're looking at today, it's just going to be at Reynolds. We have the traditional program, and those are students who are not enrolled in T W B I. And then we have TK five moderate severe. We typically group those kids in grade spans. Occasionally, we'll have a K five, but what we typically do grades spans. And then there's state preschool and there's special education preschool. So when I reference elementary programs, that's what I'm going to be talking about when we're looking at the two different columns for enrollment. Next slide. Now, a question that's come up in talking about capacity. There's different ways of looking at capacity. There's state, there's district. And then what's most important also is what's in your collective bargaining agreement. So when we're looking at district capacity, what the architect does is creates a formula that he can lay across the sites when he walks the sites. And I say he because it's Kevin, but it could be a sheet. So we look at state preschool. So the formula that D L R used was state preschool was a twenty-four-to-one ratio, same with TK, same with K three. For four and five, they loaded it up to thirty-six. For mod severe, they did nine-to-one. C's, they did thirteen-to-one. Preschool sped twenty-three-to-one. And then what's really important here to look at is your non-loaded or specialty rooms. A non-loaded room is an empty classroom, which really doesn't exist because a principal can always find something to put in a room. But it's a classroom that doesn't necessarily have a class assigned to it. Then you might have a specialty room. This is a room that could be your art room, or it could be your music room. It's not necessarily assigned to a classroom or a group of set students. So that's what D L R used for district capacity. When we look at our O U S D ratios, it's very similar, but we have to make sure we go by our collective bargaining agreement for what we're loading our classes in. So what you're going to see in blue are most recent ratios. We have our state preschool. Our TK is going to go down to eighteen. K three is twenty-four. I, we can increase those a little bit, but because of our funding, we have to stay at twenty-four for K three. We know four to five, it could go above thirty-two, but in our contract, we have thirty-two. Mod severe is at eleven, C's is eleven, and preschool is twenty-three. So why is this important? Well, your, your district loading ratios could be certainly higher than your O U S D. So for example, if D L R walked a site and there was, were two empty rooms, they would count those as twenty-eight students. Let's say we merged a site, though, those rooms that might have been counted by D L R at twenty-eight. O U S D is going to count by whomever we're putting in there. So if we put an upper-grade room, it's going to raise the capacity because we can go to thirty-two or even above that sometimes. But if we chose to put a C's class in there, well, it would lower it down to eleven. So what had been counted at twenty-eight, we're now going to load at eleven. So that's why there's a fluctuation. So the most important thing you can do is look at your students one by one, grade span by grade span, and divide them out, and I'll show you my formulas on how I did that to make sure that we would have enough space. Any questions about this before we go on? Okay.
Is the TK number lower? Is the state trying to move that number down?
It will eventually be twelve. You're right. Next year, we're going to eighteen, but I believe it's going to twelve. We discussed that today. Yeah.
Actually, Mr. Joyce, I'll jump in here. It will not be each classroom will be twelve. It'll be twelve adults. So there would be two adults in one teaching classroom. So it doesn't double it. So we currently would, again, doesn't impact the facilities. It impacts the staffing ratio.
So Mercedes is here if you have any other questions about that. Thanks for saving us.
I would love to talk about that later.
So much to talk about. All right. So our next slide, please. So one thing that's really important, and I've been, I've been a principal who's been in this situation. So I think messaging out this is very important. When sites are consolidated, the student-teacher ratio does not change. Class sizes remain the same. We maintain the collective bargaining agreement. We maintain our funding from our state so we don't shove more kids into classes and teachers on top of each other in single classrooms. And so that's important that that continue to be the message that we will share with our families. Next slide. So to get the formulas, basically what I did was I looked at our students that would be merged together, and I combined the total, I divided it by eighteen, and that would give me my TK classrooms. Same for, same idea with divided by twenty-four, thirty-two, and then we reserved one classroom for each mild-mod teacher who would potentially be merged. Mild-mod teachers sometimes share rooms, sometimes they don't, some push in. So those models can also vary. Next slide. Thank you. So what we're going to be doing now is really diving into each of the scenarios. We have a lot of maps and different kind of figures for you to look at. The first one's going to be merging Laurel with Mission, and when you see the school in parentheses, that means where they will be housed. The next one is merging Reynolds Traditional Program with Del Rio. So those are our students who are not in T W B I or merging Reynolds T W B I with Libby. And the last one would be to merge Del Rio with Libby at Libby. Each of the scenarios is going to follow the same pattern, so you'll see similar slides. It'll just be for that specific population. Right, next slide, number eleven. So what I did was I took the big district map and I condensed it down to show you what we're going to be looking at. You can see Laurel and Brown. And Laurel's kind of funny. You can see it's got a little pocket down in the yellow area, which is actually South Oh. So you can see Laurel is in two different spots, and then you have Mission. So they are side by side. Mission was modernized in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. It is in better condition than Laurel. Laurel was modernized in oh-three, oh-four. Right now Laurel needs about sixteen million in immediate repairs and about forty-four in long term, and that's according to the Long Range Facilities Master Plan. Next slide. Okay, so this will be the first of slides that we're going to look at that look like this. You have Mission and Laurel and combined enrollment on the far left. You'll see across the top, we have K five gen ed that should see take, that should say TK. I apologize for that. And then we have all programs and district capacity. So please note TK is figured in this. When we look at programs located in Laurel, that goes back to that slide in the beginning that talked about what programs are at the school site. We have our TK five gen ed. We have two moderate severe classes. This is at Laurel. We don't have state preschool, and we have one sped preschool classroom. And then at Mission, we have our TK five gen ed. We do not have mod severe, one state preschool, and one sped preschool classroom. It's important that I share these programs with you because while they're currently located at those school sites, these programs are mobile. We can place these programs across the district where it best meets the needs of the students and where our facilities can house them. And so as we look at our scenarios, we're going to be looking at our TK five population because that isn't as mobile. These other programs, we can place other places, and we would work with E S S, and in particular, our special education department, and then also our preschool. So that would come as another layer after we decide what sites we might want to merge. So that would be deciding this other programs. The next slide shows site and programs, number of classrooms, and additional modulars needed. Now, when we talk about modulars, we talk about modulars that are flush to the ground, that look like classrooms. They are similar in appearance. They're not the old-school portables up on a ramp. Our goal is to have nice facilities. So if we were to merge the general education program TK through five at Mission, it currently has twenty-nine rooms we'd use. I set aside one classroom for childcare. We'd need thirty-five, so we'd have to buy six modulars. So that's how we looked at some of the initial costs.
Dr. Norman.
Uh-huh.
Where do we have examples of the modulars that we're referring to in this, in these scenarios? Do we have them? Well, no, physically, where we could actually go visit them. What is our most like? Where, where could, if I wanted to go tomorrow and go check out one like this, where's the best place for me to go? Mission?
I believe Mission has some. I also, we're, we're putting it out to bid right now for S L R because we're going to buy new ones for S L R. So I can, I can show you pictures of what that is, but Mission has modulars that are flush and look like regular buildings.
And what's the typical life expectancy of the modulars?
About twenty years, twenty to thirty years, depending on where they're located and what kind of traffic they get.
If we were to do like actual hard construction building, the cost difference would be in the millions, I would assume.
Exponential. You've been on my committees. I can tell. You know the cost. Yeah, it would be in the millions. Yeah.
Yeah, just walking through it out loud, but their life expectancy would probably be double or so, but the cost obviously would be more than double.
Exponential. Correct.
All right, I'm just walking through. Thank you.
That's fine. That's what this is all about. Thank you. So the next, we're looking at a slide, and I have a better one after this. But this one talks about the furthest walking distance. So you've got the circle. The circle is a mile one way and it's a mile the other. So in the middle of the circle is the school. And then you can see a mile all around it. We do walking studies, and that's where we get these graphs. So you can see all the yellow dots represent children. The furthest distance from Laurel to Mission is one-point-six-three miles. If we go to the next slide, it shows you a close-up of that area, and all those little dots there represent where our students are living in the Laurel attendance zone. And remember, Laurel has that funny little pocket down below, and then you have Mission with the red arrow. And so that's where they'd be walking to. Ready for the next slide? Okay. So now we're costing out, if we were to go down the road with merging Laurel and Mission, what would it look like? So when we costed out, we looked at the modulars. We talked about them. They're about two-ten each. So we've got one-point-two million on modulars. So that means we have Reynolds that hasn't been touched, so we would want to rebuild Reynolds. And then we also have to take care of Surfside, and that's about seventeen. So that scenario, if we're making sure all of our students are taken care of, it's a little over sixty-seven million. Our first issuance of W will be about fifty. So now we're going to talk about the next scenario, and that one.
So before you go on.
Sure.
With that scenario A, and if you're adding Laurel students to Mission, what happens to Laurel?
We would have to decide what we want to do with Laurel. That's a great question.
That, would that be that we'd have to additionally then also add the demolition of that site then?
If you wanted to demo it, correct. If we didn't repurpose it for anything else.
Or it could be up for grabs by a charter, potentially.
You're correct. You're correct, Mr. Blessing.
For the demo.
But, but it's, it's an asset. It's an asset. We have to, we would have But, but it's, it's an asset. It's an asset. We have to, we would have to deal with one way or the other.
Correct.
Presumably something on the positive ledger, but.
Okay. So now we're going to talk about our next scenario. It's scenario B, and there's two parts to this. So this is our Reynolds scenario. If you look at the map here, Reynolds is in the dark pink, Libby's in the middle in the light pink and Del Rio's in the green on the right. So we're going to talk about how we're going to potentially split Rio, sorry, Reynolds into Del Rio and Libby. Both Libby and Del Rio are modernized campuses. Libby was completed in two thousand and eleven and Del Rio was completed in two thousand and nine. Okay, if Reynolds is split and merged with two other sites, it would not be rebuilt. So that would be a demo site.
Oh.
Oh, Ms. Ms. Eleanor.
Yes, this is their potential development of new homes in that area.
That would be, I believe, North River. That would, that's a potential that's out there. Yeah. And we're going to have, our Davis demographics gives us, we're doing another study right now on everything that's going to be coming our way. That will come out in December. So there are potential developments happening, correct?
Thank you.
So now we're going to look at the same type of graph again. Again, this is TK, not just K. If we combined just gen ed, Del Rio, Reynolds, we get six seventy-seven, all programs seven thirty-four. Our capacity six eighty-one. Again, it looks like it easily fits inside. But when you actually lay in the classes, it changes how many students can make based on how many kids are in a classroom. So if you look at the merged traditional program with Del Rio, Del Rio currently has twenty-two classrooms. We left one classroom needed for childcare music portable. We would need to find a location for our four non-TK-five gen ed classes. We would need to buy eight modulars in order to make this work. So when we look, another question that came up is, well, who is attending TWBI in our district? And are people coming from out of district for this program? So we broke down the enrollment. If we look at Reynolds TWBI in the green, in-school boundary is one hundred and thirty-two, out-of-school boundary is seventy. So we have kids who opt into the program and then out-of-district is twelve. When we look at our traditional programs, those are kids who live in the area, the attendance area. We have three hundred and twenty-three. Out of the boundary, twenty-seven opt to come in and two are from out of the district. And so when you put them all together, we have four hundred and fifty-five in-school, ninety-seven out of boundary, and then out of district, we have fourteen. And that's, that makes up our population at Reynolds. So our next slide. So here is another picture. I have another one coming up after this. That's a little closer, but this just gives you the bird's eye view of the school. That's the circle with all the students in yellow. The furthest walking distance from Reynolds attendance area to Del Rio is one point eight seven miles. If we go to the next slide, it shows the close-up view and you can see there's Del Rio right there. Libby's in the middle in green and then Reynolds is all the yellow. And so our students would be going from the yellow to Del Rio.
Is there, is there scenarios where we would look at redrawing these boundaries for kids that would be closer to Libby to also go to Libby? Not just the kids that are in the TWBI program?
We didn't explore boundaries in this presentation, but that's certainly a topic we could, boundaries is a whole another topic outside of just this conversation. We could certainly look at that, but it's not going to be in one of the upcoming slides. No, it's just a summary slide at the end.
I would just say a flag to plan in everybody's head is that these boundaries are based on the three school boundaries. You know, if we are looking at Reynolds not being there or being a school, then we would definitely want to redraw lines to make sure that this is shortest route. So that would change that.
You're correct. And that's something that we're absolutely going to have to do. For those schools that are impacted, we'd need to redraw the boundaries for those schools. We're not looking at redrawing boundaries across the district for everyone, but that's a good point. Thank you.
So when I look at this map, most of the students that attend Reynolds are right there in that neighborhood. Right, like right next to the school. There's lots of little houses over there. So.
And that supports the graph that we showed earlier, just that you could see how many come from out and how many are in. About ninety-seven came from out. Most of the students are in.
I have a question. So why are we only looking to put Reynolds only into Del Rio and not into Libby and Del Rio if they both have space? So why are we showing that scenario?
You're, you're correct. We are. That's going to be a part two of scenario B. So that's coming up. So if we go to the next slide, it's exactly what Ms. Alvarez just asked for. What, what does it look like if we put part of Reynolds also in Libby? So you can see our TK gen ed, Libby, Reynolds, TWBI would be a five seventy-five enrollment. Total enrollment, all programs, that's if all the programs stayed on campus and were combined, we'd be up to six twenty-two. So the next slide shows that Libby has existing classrooms thirty. We left the stage classroom alone and one more classroom for childcare. So we would not need to add any modulars. So that would be the scenario for Reynolds TWBI going into Libby. So that's the other half of the equation.
Before you head any further, sorry, Eleanor, go ahead.
Oh, my question was the stage classroom. Is that the multipurpose room?
Correct. That one's not used. I just made a note that I didn't put student, I didn't put a class in there.
So I was just making note that, sorry.
I would not feel comfortable with the classroom in there in the multipurpose room because of the activities that go on.
Correct. That's why we did not put one in there. And I just made a note because when you look at the map, it's, it's on there. So it's, we didn't put kids there. I agree. Trusty Joyce.
Go ahead, Eric.
And if there are additional students in that, in that upper area on the map that we just saw, there are still classrooms available at that site too. So it's just another flag.
Okay. So when we look, so that is, that's the end of that scenario. So B had splitting Reynolds and we looked at the two parts. So our last scenario we're going to look at is going to be.
Hold on, I still have a question. I'm still back on the last. Um, yeah.
If, yeah.
If we're looking at, so we're, we're splitting it. So we're, so the scenario that you've just shown is going to split Del Rio, I mean Reynolds into Del Rio and Libby. We would still have to put eight modulars total to make it, to make all of Reynolds fit in between the two schools.
Hmm, correct.
That's assuming that all the students that were not in TWBI went to Del Rio and none of them chose Libby.
And I would have to say most TWBI students will go with the program because you're invested in the program and it's, and you all know about the program.
I, I was referring to the non-TW.
Oh, the non-TW.
So all of the students that are not in that program would be choosing to go to Del Rio instead of Libby in this situation.
Right.
So we may not need that many if some of those students choose to go to Del Rio or choose to go to Libby, excuse me.
Potentially.
Because if you look at the map, because if I look at the map, there's a lot more students closer to Libby than to Del Rio. And so the walking distance would be less than.
Correct. And you know, I, I, you're right. And I didn't show you the walking distance. I apologize. The next slide shows the walking distance. And then I have, this one is furthest walking from Reynolds to Libby is one seven-four. So it's a little less, but you could see that on the map. It's closer. So, and then the next one shows where Libby is in the green and then all of the students around. So this is TWBI, and that's why you have dots all over the district and a few from out because the program attracts kids from outside the area. So the summary for this cost is the next slide. We had eight modulars for Del Rio. If we were to potentially close Reynolds and demo it and then modernize Surfside, it would be about twenty million dollars.
Do we have a timeframe of what it would take to modernize Surfside? Would it be the same as doing like SLR or something like that?
Yeah, and I know you're active in that committee. It would be the same. So we do, we would do our committees, our programming, then we go into construction. So it'd be about three years, two to three years.
This doesn't include any proceeds that would come from the potential sale of Reynolds property either. That's not included in any of these scenarios?
No, we didn't do any sales of properties. That's, that would be something that we'd have to look into. Okay, so now we're at the last scenario. I was a little ahead of myself before. I apologize. Now we have merged Del Rio with Libby. And if you look at the map, Del Rio's our green one and Libby is our light pink one in the middle. If you were to merge them, our TK-five, next slide please, our next slide, sorry. Our combined would be six eighty-six. For gen ed, all programs would be seven ninety, capacity seven ninety-four. Here are the programs that take place at those sites. And then our next slide shows how they would fit. They basically fit perfectly. What I've done, again, is I've been generous with giving each mod, mod mild teacher, mild mod teacher classroom. And then we've set aside another classroom needed for childcare. So during the day, that's not being used. And then there's the stage classroom. That's also an empty space that could also be used. We would need to relocate or potentially looking at space, seven non-gen ed classes. So in our next slide, that shows the walking distance, all of our yellow dots and the mile around, and it's one point one seven miles if you were to walk from Del Rio to Libby. And that's your furthest student away. And the next slide shows you all your Del Rio students and how they're spread out adjacent to Libby's. Libby's in the orange. And then because we've been talking about this, and this is part of this scenario, it's important to note about Surfside. So Surfside draws from all over our district, of course. And if you notice, a lot of the students are clumped on both sides. And out in the valley, we have a large percentage of students. Many live near the Del Rio campus. And so what we were thinking is if we were to merge Del Rio with Libby, Del Rio would not sit empty. We would move our Surfside students into Del Rio. And then we would decide what we'd want to do with the Surfside property. So the next slide shows the costs. We showed that we didn't need to add modulars in how it was presented. If we were to buy furniture, it's about two seventy-five. I try to shave that down a little bit, but we're talking about buying, we'd have to buy some furniture because these are larger students. We had closed Surfside, potential demolition would be about a million. It's a little smaller campus. And then we would rebuild Reynolds for forty-nine million. So this option has a price tag of about fifty million. And then in the last slide, this just shows everything together. It's just a summary slide for you to refer to. And we've gone over each of these costs throughout the presentation. The next slide shows mobility factors. We had a question about mobility and I shared this in our last presentation. And what it shows is the green and the gray mean that it's a hundred percent. So this shows a four years of students on average with three moves. And so we've got the average number of students who moved up from year to year. So let's look at.
Anybody else here in chatter?
I am. Yeah.
Yeah, Eleanor, maybe if you mute.
Okay, so let's look at Reynolds, for example. Reynolds, for four years, three moves, we had a hundred percent students come back or not transfer. When they went up from first to second, we had a hundred percent plus two more. Then from second to third, we had ninety-seven percent. Then we have a one, that means all ninety-seven, if we're talking about ones. All ninety-seven moved up. We have a one again, all ninety-seven moved up. We have a one point oh-seven means ninety-seven plus seven. So you can see for Reynolds, we have really strong enrollment going across even at ninety-nine percent with the lowest getting down to, it looks like about ninety-five. So that's how you read that. So it's an average of sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, moving to show your average number of kids who leave. And Reynolds stays pretty strong.
Could.
Then, yeah.
Could I add something on?
Sure.
Mobility. When you look at, this is a really cool piece of our OUSD plan. You can look at the projected enrollment for a couple of years out. And it looks like Libby is going to add eight, it's projected to add eight. Del Rio would lose about thirty and then Reynolds would lose actually fourteen, which is even more than than Libby was adding. So it's just interesting to use that new tool that we have to compare it to it. I'm just wondering why Reynolds looks like it's losing kids in the long term on that one, but this one, it looks like it's more steady.
One thing about the difference between Davis demographics and DLR, DLR did our Long Range Facilities Master Plan, is they looked at projections two different ways. Davis demographics looked at projections for TK-five only. No out-of-district, no mod severe, no pre-K are in the projections. So how you get it for DLR is they look at, well, who's currently at your school site that are in those programs that we've been talking about that are outside of general ed? And they look at what percentage of your students are in programs, non-gen ed? And they prorate that percentage in your projections for each year out. So that's why DLR's projections will be higher. Because they're saying if you kept all these students together on an average percentage, this is where you're going to get. If you look at Del Rio and Libby projections to Davis demographics, what they have, right now, they projected us for Del Rio at three thirty-nine. This year, we're at three twenty-four. So their projections are a little bit over right now. So that's one of the things that we're going to be looking at with our new report coming out because we've had to go off of projections from two years ago because of COVID and kind of the bump in our enrollment that was not typical. So that's, that's two different ways to look at enrollment. It's just your core program with projections or it's your core programs with your percentage of other programs. So DLR and Davis did it two different ways. And it goes back to, the reason is, is you can move those other programs anywhere. That's why they don't attach it to the projections.
It, it's interesting though, when you do look at the percentage of students that attend that program, they are mostly in that school site. So I mean, it's not to say that moving the program won't have any effect either. So.
At Reynolds, you're right. Reynolds doesn't have other programs. Reynolds is either TWBI or you're in the traditional program. They do have mild mod. But mild mod students are gen ed students first.
I guess I was referring to TWBI.
Oh, okay. You're correct.
Well, one thought maybe Eric too, that I, that the difference is projects differently perhaps than what you might think with the numbers is that you've got relatively lower bases at Del Rio and Libby, four hundred and, and three hundred and eighty or so and even less today versus the five hundred plus that's at Reynolds currently and projecting to go forward currently, you know, carrying a five eighty into the future or whatever it is. And it's losing maybe fourteen students, but the others are in a little smaller base. So in raw numbers, we got more kids in the Reynolds scenario, you know, hanging up projected to go there, even though the percentage looks like it's a loser, if you will, or different, different, sends you a different way. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
Yeah, I think the only thing I was really trying to get across is that these other schools are, are projected to hold their enrollment pretty strongly as well.
Yeah, because they're, because they're low right now.
I have a question. So we're looking at these, so how many students at Reynolds do we know if, like, based on Reynolds, Libby and Del Rio, do we know that are military families? Because we obviously know that the military families come and go and they're consistent. So they're going to stay for three years or whatever, and then they're going to go and then more families will come in. So do we know like what the numbers are? Like, I'll, I'll, I'll guarantee that there's not a whole lot of families that move into the Libby and Del Rio area unless they move into the apartments or something like that because those are easy move-ins and stuff like that. But what, what percentage is military at each of those schools? Do we happen to know that?
I can find out for you. How many are military connected families? But I don't have that right now. But this graph does speak to being able to maintain enrollment regardless. But this graph does speak to being able to maintain enrollment regardless. And you had a good point, Ms. Alvarez, is that families move in and families move out. But in looking at this mobility factor with all of the green and the gray, that means that we're maintaining regardless if we have military families or not. TWBI is a big part of that. But we just have families that stay in the area. We do think that by rebuilding Reynolds, we would also attract more families. Because military families do have a choice. We can lose out to other districts if they take a look at Reynolds and say. No, thank you. I'm going to go to a different school. We think that by rebuilding it, we could certainly capture more students and families.
That's the whole thing with SLR is it making it this beautiful campus that people are gonna be attracted to the program. And come into that and want to be in that program. So that program will actually grow at that site too.
You're correct. You know, I'm a big fan of TWBI.
Yeah, we, I mean, we're hopeful that we can launch these all over the place, actually. But I would expect San Luis Rey to be very attractive after the rebuild for sure with the TW, TWI. And now Reynolds too, with a new campus.
So Dr. Norman, can you remind me, what's the enrollment of Surfside?
Enrollment, I don't have that right here next. Oh. You know what? I don't have it in my graph up top. Oh, you, it's, I just did furniture for it. I think it's like, it's in the threes. I have it on my furniture graph.
So it's, okay. Three hundred students would be moved if, if we made that decision. Okay.
Three thirty-three as of two thousand nineteen.
Okay, thanks.
All parked enough, yeah.
But I just checked and. That's right. Thank you. Okay, let's talk about student need index. This is a question that came up and how do you, how do you decide on student need index? You look at your number of English learners in a school site, students with disabilities, low income, foster youth and homeless. These are all weighted differently when they go into the long range facilities master plan. This is where you'll find this index. It's out of five. One thing that can have a significant difference, for example, Del Rio's is lower. Del Rio does not have a mod severe program. And so you'll see that that's potentially why the number is lower versus you go to Laurel and Laurel has two mod severe classes there. And so then that could impact that. So this just shows you your student need and our recommendations that we've been talking about throughout the presentation.
Reynolds, does that include the TWBI program? I would assume it would. So there would be a higher number of students who are native Spanish speakers in that as well.
Potentially, I would think so. I mean, your goal, your goal with TWBI is half and half. But that doesn't always happen. It depends on where the school's placed. If you have a school in more of a low income area. You can typically hit the target of half to half. If you don't then, and it's in a more English only area, then potentially it might be a sixty, forty. So it just depends on what your class makeup is. So lastly, next slide. Next slide. Oh, the other one, go back one please, thanks. So again, in looking at in summary, Del Rio and Libby, we're talking about merging two of our smallest sites. In doing so, we could also move a group of students, the three hundred from Surfside. Which moves the fewest number of students to another site. And it also keeps large groups of students together rather than splitting them up. The majority of Del Rio TK five students can move together. It will maintain Reynolds popular TWBI program along with their population that we've been discussing is very stable. It could potentially capture Reynolds students attending neighboring districts. And it provides Surfside with a modernized site located next to a transit center. And again, we could move all of those students at once. So after our discussion today, this is a potential timeline is to identify potential sites to merge in September. I have community meetings in October. We'll finalize the decisions at a board meeting in October or November. Then we'll move into order the modulars if needed and begin the transition work. We'll be messaging out from November through the end of the year and then have our new locations ready. Next slide. Trustee Joyce asked about school boundaries. We have thought about this. That is a really big topic and it's not something we take lightly because many families have been in the same boundary for years. We would potentially merge two sites and adjust boundaries accordingly. We'd maintain current boundaries for sites not impacted by the merger. Next, next slide. That's for elementary. Looking at middle school, because this did come up too in our previous discussion. We noticed that we had some boundaries that seemed a little out of alignment. So we'd establish a committee to examine current boundaries for middle school sites. We would meet regularly from January of this upcoming January, the of twenty twenty-two through January of twenty twenty-three. Then we provide recommendations to the, recommendations to the board in January of twenty twenty-three to implement that fall. Which would then give our families plenty of time to know. And we'd also come up with a plan. Oftentimes districts have grandfather plans where we roll it out and we slowly transition families so that it's not abrupt. And we would talk that through also with the committee. Next slide. And that's, that's it for the presentation. So now we'll continue on with our discussion.
So I, I just have a question about Surfside. You have three hundred bodies that come to that campus, but is that the entire enrollment of Surfside? Because I, for some reason, I thought it was higher than that.
I'll look into the enrollment right now while we have this discussion and get that for you.
Okay.
Additionally, it was larger, Dr. Begin, during the pandemic. Because we had a large number of students choose that virtual instruction portion. But this year it has returned to his, about where it was historically. So your memory is absolutely correct. It was just a one time during the pandemic.
Thank you.
Are we setting up for public comment before we have more conversation? Can't tell.
Sure, we can do that. Is there any public comment?
Yes, there's one. Jim Hinderleiter.
Sure. Well, let's call him up. And while we're getting him, promoting him, the Oceanside School Board is happy to receive comments about items and issues on tonight's agenda. We generally give everyone up to three minutes. That's, I just wanted to let them know if they haven't given public comment before. Because this is a special meeting, it's not as formal as one of our business meetings. So it, I'll just throw it out there. I, I noticed on the participants, we have both labor partner presidents on. So if they wanted to weigh in, give any feedback or comments, I'd be happy to hear those as well. So do we want to call him up? Jim, are you ready for your public comment?
Yes, I, I was thinking that. I wasn't sure if the adult, the Oceanside Adult Transition Program was gonna be part of this consolidation discussion, but it isn't. So. Dr. Norman has been working with us on this. So we're, we're good. We're, we're okay here. I, there's nothing for me to discuss at this meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Jim. And yes, ATP is always on our mind.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for advocating. All right. Do either one of our labor partners want to speak?
Sean Peterson would like to speak.
Sure. All right, Sean.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm a teacher at Surfside Educational Academy. And I think your enrollment numbers are way off. Just in the high school at. Independent Study Side, we have over four hundred kids.
Sean, Sean, you're correct. We were just going through, we have five eighty-one and we confirmed with Mr. Franston, yeah.
I was like, oh my goodness, are they kidding me? Because who am I talking to every day? Okay.
So you're correct. Good math.
Okay, thank you. And that's just our side. I don't know about Surfside High School. And all those little kids, K eight. Okay.
Thank you. We have five eighty-one.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
No, thank you. Andy, do you want to differentiate between the onsite program and then the independent study? Do we have those differentiated? I think that's what Sean was speaking to.
You're muted, Dr. Norman.
While we get those. Stacy, you can continue to take questions or discussion with the board while we'll differentiate those numbers for Surfside.
Okay. Anybody want to start this conversation? Ask questions? I'll start.
I got a question about the chart, the kind of last chart about the rollout of this. So the idea is that this evening we give direction to staff that we like to go in some direction on this, on the plan. Staff's recommending going with the, with the Reynolds rebuild a hundred percent. And Del Rio merged to Libby and moved Surfside over to Del Rio. And I'm comfortable with that. I think it, it makes sense. But at the, the meeting that you're gonna hold in September as a community meeting, give me a description of what that, what's that community meeting look like? And if we, if we hear some serious new information or something of significance there. Would you be bringing that back to us for a relook at some alternatives? What's, I'd like about that a little bit.
Yes, Mike, the way we envision that is similar to the meetings that we held for SLR and Garrison. And what we did with that is we had someone moderate those discussions and collect that input. And then we provided that in total to the Board of Education and we would do the same thing here. It would be important to notify the communities that are being impacted by the decision and what the decision is. And give them the opportunity to, to share with the board what their thoughts on that is, whether those might be supportive or non-supportive thoughts. So if you can recall that process that we used, we had two different evenings. We would do the same thing and provide the Board of Education with all of the feedback. You know, unedited, yeah.
Yeah, I get that. Would you, would, would part of that discussion or evolving issues be for? Because I can see it, sense that the, the Del Rio folks would be the most impacted and feel the most hurt, obviously. And trying to convince them that this makes sense may be hard from that standpoint. Does their staff give any thought to the transition to allow some. Transfer abilities to a school other than Libby, like to Reynolds or something from, from the Del Rio family of three hundred or so? As part of that, part of the arrangement, if we decide to go forward with the Reynolds rebuild and the Del Rio reload.
You mean transfers by staff or transfers by students?
I'm talking about students. Students, families who might have concerns about going to Libby from Del Rio. Could they elect to go to, you know, Reynolds or elect to go to another place that had available space? As part of that process, potentially, I'm not saying a just hard decision, but it's something that's in the staff's consciousness.
It is now. Dr. Sparks, I, I would need your assistance a little bit in talking about. How we allow for people to put in for those intra-district transfer requests. That's really what we'd be talking about.
I would, I would expect there'd be like a special program to deal with this unique situation, not our generalized one that we've got now, which basically doesn't exist. If I understand it right. I mean, it's very narrow from what it used to be.
Yeah, we still have a process.
For a decision, I'm just wondering if that's something, depending upon the reactions that we get. Is that one of the options that staff might want to offer the Del Rio folks? That's my only, that's, that's what I want to convey.
Yeah, I think it would be, so you, are you saying with our recommendation, Mike? If people from, if students from Del Rio didn't want to go to Libby, but they wanted to go to Reynolds?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and you're saying not just follow our intra-district transfer process, but maybe have some, it's a special circumstance sort of situation.
Yes.
Yeah, we haven't talked about that, but we certainly could. I think it would be very interesting. We'd certainly get a sense from the. Del Rio community if that was something that was interesting and we would need to talk about what that process might look like. Jordy, I don't know if you have anything to add to that. And of course, they would be going to a school that would be, you know, under construction and being modernized. But I'm sure there could be some absorption there. But Jordy, do you want to add to that at all?
Yeah, we, we've used a process before when we closed Garrison and consolidated Garrison into San Luis Rey. And so we did use. An inter-district, intra-district transfer window that we monitored for about a, a two to three week period. So it's a similar process that we could use if that's something that we're interested in doing.
I just think that would be, give parents and children an, an opportunity to feel more comfortable about the choice. Rather than being forced to one choice being the Libby one out of our desires to create other benefits throughout the rest of the district. To get a brand new school at Reynolds, get a Surfside, getting a brand new facility virtually. For their students that are, for five hundred students or however many we got there. And that's, that's all, this is my suggestion. But I support staff's recommendation in general on this and that, and that way to do, to do this.
I have the numbers for you. I confirmed with Eric and Dr. McEachair. We have about a hundred and twenty-eight in SCA Elementary, about two seventy-eight in the SCA Secondary. That would be middle school and high school and about one hundred and seventy-eight in Surfside High School.
So total is five hundred.
We have five eighty-one total.
Okay.
Rock, did you want to go or you want me to go?
No, I'll go. Yeah, I'll go. So my thing right now is, I, I can't. I don't like the Laurel mission, obviously, because there's just, there's too many walkers, I think, in that area. So looking at, at the littles that walk, because we have so many families that work one, two, multiple, some even three jobs in that area. That the littles just walk. The students just wind up walking on their own and they're too small to even take that mile across those main roads. So that option just goes out the window. Then you have the merge of Reynolds. You have the remodel for Reynolds and merging Del Rio into. Del Rio into Libby. And my concern there is that we have walkers through the same way that we do in Laurel and, and. And Mission area. We have a lot of walkers because the families tend to, to have multiple jobs and things. And so I worry about those students. They would be walking even that short distance, you know. And so, and then I look at the money factor. Because we're, we're looking at the huge money factor. Yes, it's a bond. And we worked diligently on this bond to get this bond and to just feel, I feel like we're just literally just throwing fifty million dollars away. Into Reynolds. When we don't put that money into any other school, like we're not looking and we weren't willing and we were never willing and we're not, I'm not willing. At this point even to put fifty million dollars into one school site. When we have so many other school sites that need so much more and things that we don't even know that they need at this point. Because when we look at the Chiuax and everything that came up with that and everything that they needed, we look at, or El Camino, we look at. OHS and everything that they needed. I look at the bond money being utilized wisely because it has to last. A long period of time. And there's a lot of things that need to be done. So spending fifty million dollars on one site alone. And making it this amazing campus because everybody stays and we want everybody to go there. I just can't, I can't do that when we weren't willing to do that to other sites. We weren't willing to put just a little bit more into other sites that we want to make more inviting, that we want to have students come to and enjoy. And just families to, to go and stay where they're supposed to go. And I know, I think everybody knows exactly what I'm talking about because I speak very clearly on it all the time, but. I, I just can't get to the point of saying fifty million dollars is okay to spend when it would only take. Where it would take a lot less money to remodel. Surfside and give them everything that they need. And even if you spent a little bit more at Surfside to give them even better. And more with, for what they could use and grow that program to, to make it what it was even during the pandemic. Because, you know, it was an amazing program during the pandemic so that we could possibly get more people coming back from. Others, other charter schools. from other charter schools or anything like that and make it more inviting so that we could have that at that potential site. And then moving Reynolds into Del Rio and to Libby and splitting those students into there. I just feel like that's, financially, it's a better choice. I feel like that the families at Reynolds, that they're able, or that they would be able to go, because the TWI will go wherever it's at, right? And we know that because those students stay in the program, they're committed to the program. They'll, they'll do whatever they need to do to be in that program because those families are committed. And we know that because it is an amazing program. So even those eight modulators, I feel like those A-modulators that we could put, we could make that somehow an amazing TWI program at one of those sites and build it again to be something amazing and inviting to grow that program on that side of town. Because we have two different schools, very not close to each other. So the program can grow anywhere that it's at because we know that. And so it's, so I can't support the the recommendation at this point. And so, I mean, that's just, I think, where I'm at right now. It looks like we have.
Response, I would just say to, to Raquel, and I hear you on the Garrison issue. Had we had, I would have voted to redo Garrison had we had a bond in the bank sitting like we do today and closed San Luis Rey. I would have done that in a heartbeat and put fifty million into Garrison if we'd been in that position three years earlier with a bond. I would not have had a qualm about that. I understand how Garrison went down ultimately, and it wasn't good for anybody. The way it all played out, it felt horrible, the whole process. And I, I, I have to take a blame for that, and I can't do anything about it now. But if it fast forwarded and we'd had the twenty-twenty bond in the bank in twenty-seventeen, I would have, I would have put the money, all of it into Garrison to do it upright and fix it up and close San Luis Rey. If that's where you're looking at consolidating or whatever, we had to do the same kind of issue. So that's why I don't have as much qualms about, we have a school that's there, a successful school, a good school, a very popular school, and investing in it lasted twenty-five years with developer money, thirty or forty years with modulators in it, and we got a use out of it. But it's still a valid viable school, and people love it, and people love the location. And investing back into it makes sense to me. Maybe we can get it down cheaper, I don't know, but it's a big number. I don't disagree with you, but I just want to say that about the Garrison thing, Raquel. Sorry.
And it wasn't so much about the Garrison thing. I guess even like SLR, like we could have put more money into SLR to building that program and that school. And again, that's, that's a new conversation because I'll continue to.
I would have put more in there too if we had it at the time, and maybe we need to do it now, you know? That's all I'm saying.
SLR was built on our prior bond funds. Am I sure, Norman? Dr. Vitale?
Correct, it's Prop H.
Okay.
Jefferson is also Prop H, and what the projects that we're doing at El Camino and OHS are also Prop H. We've not allocated any W dollars yet.
Can I just maybe add a caution to speaking about schools as popular? Because all the schools that we have are going to be very popular to their community. And, and I just want to be careful about who, because we tend to hear voices from certain schools more than others, but that doesn't mean that the, those other schools are not popular. I just want to throw that out.
I appreciate that, Eric.
Well, we, we have constantly talked about equity, and school facilities is an integral part of equity and school opportunity. When you walk on Reynolds campus, I was really, quite frankly devastated. It's, it's awful. There's termites, damage all over the campus. The floors are worn. It's not a place that says, you know, welcome, this is a place where you can learn. It's a place that represents nineteen fifty deja vu Blackboard jungle schools, quite frankly. Okay? Fortunately, Reynolds is a school with heart and with a high curriculum. And it would be, it's going to be a travesty to disperse the TWBI students all over Oceanside. That's what, that is what will happen. I would like to see the program grow. And I know, I know it will, but this method of, you know, like, well, let's just ship them here and there. That's not going to grow. That's going to destroy the TWBI program.
Thanks, Eleanor. I see we have a public comment. Someone was just promoted.
Yes, Tiffany Ortega.
Hi, good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to talk. I am Tiffany Ortega. I am with Oceanside Association. I am their president. And the point that I wanted to make is, and I think it was Dr. Norman that I heard say, we need to move slow to move fast. I love that quote, and when I think about in the past, any pitfall that we've had with transferring sites or consolidating sites or closing schools, it's been because the teachers weren't talked to. And so I really want to encourage, I'm hearing about community forums, but I want to say, please talk to the teachers. The teachers are the ones that know the families the best, they know the student need the best, they know all of the ins and outs of what that school has and what it needs, and what pitfall you might encounter upon switching to a different campus. So I really want to encourage you to talk to the teachers, listen to what they have to say in, in either a separate forum or in that same forum, make sure that those teachers are invited to that. And I appreciate, I understand facilities are a concern, and I love the way that you guys are taking time and talking about this, but there's a voice missing, and I know it is the board's decision, but the person or the people that know what will be best, not, not necessarily fiscally, but at the heart of the school and what that school and that student needs is the teacher. And I'm encouraging you to please roll them in. Thank you.
Stacy, I'll, I'll address that. Once we have some direction from the board and we know which school sites to talk to, we will conduct an all-staff meeting and talk to and listen to all staff at the school sites that are impacted. So thank you for that comment.
Great.
Eric?
So please stop me if you have a comment on something, because I'm going to go through a couple of different things. Board members especially. So number one, merging Laurel and Mission, I definitely can't support for many of the reasons that Raquel brought up. Number two, I wish we would have these conversations more in context of the total bond expenditure. When we talk about equity and where the money's going to go, looking at spending a third of our total bond on one site is a big decision that isn't necessarily something that we had planned for. And so I think we should have that conversation within the same conversation. We should be looking at what downstream impacts do we have from spending fifty million versus twenty million? And what that means for our long-term viability? The, the number two is, I want to make sure that we have a full conversation about why we really need to. Kind of, I know we've been kind of hedging around this a long time, but it's an important part of it. And then the third big piece with looking at option C. So option C is titled, merge Del Rio with Libby and then rebuild. It didn't have rebuild Reynolds and move Surfside under the column. And I just want to point that out that Surfside wasn't in the title, even though we're again talking about moving that entire set of students, which we just had this Herculean effort to get groups that were really struggling to come together that had been put at separate sites for a reason to come together. It took a lot more than even we realized, unless you talk to the people that were at that site, it took a ton. So those students who do have considerations of what neighborhood they are in, and, you know, gang affiliations has to do with that, some of these students are really trying to put their, they want to be at school. But if they're in a place, if the school is in a place where they're not safe, then we're going to lose those students. And this is, and Surfside is like their last effort. And Del Rio is not a neutral area for many of the students that attend Surfside in talking with practitioners on the ground that service those students. So they have said they will lose students and that it is a, it is not a good choice. So for me, that's a huge factor in C beyond the thirty million extra that we would have to pay. And also, you know, I think somebody else brought it up that, you know, it feels like we're losing Reynolds in B, but we don't really talk about that we are definitely losing Del Rio in C. So it's, the framing is really important in that. I also worry about the, the school being sized right, not just furniture, but are the bathrooms appropriate for older kids to go to? I mean, is that another piece that we would have to replace, Dr. Norman?
Right, we would walk through and look at a needs assessment in terms of bringing in other students. But we have upper grade students already, but it is a, it is a large campus. It would fit on the campus if Del Rio were to go in there, but we do a needs assessment for the students would come in, making sure it's ready for them.
So still speaking to the, that recommendation, because there's three recommendations. The elementary, no movement of elementary boundaries, middle, middle boundaries to address in committee. And then the first and biggest one that we're talking about. So I'm just talking about that big one first. And, and looking at that, I don't see how I could go with C. And, but that doesn't mean I necessarily think B is the absolute best one. I think it's probably the best of the three. But I also, I just, I think we have more conversations that we need to have, even before we, I think we could have more conversations with the board before we even take it out to the public to do that. So I think there are lots of things that if we bring one of these to the public, they're going to talk about one of these, but there is a whole range of things that aren't included in this conversation that I think we need to take on. So that, that's my.
Okay. I, I see we have another public comment. Anne?
If she could raise her hand, because I don't see.
I, she was let in, so I see her promoted. She's a teacher over at Surfside.
Okay, Julie Sackles?
Sack is Francis, that's fine. So my comment was, I'm echoing what Eric said about the location and how hard we fought to keep, to bring the location to, to the old Ditmar campus and how important access is as well. Not just the location, but also, you know, having somewhere, multiple ways for them to access our campus. And yes, the bus will get them there, but mass transit will get them there much quicker. So that's, that's my only comment. And I would, you know, I agree, I would love to see our campus built up as something, as a destination place, because, you know, we're, we're right on the, on the coast. It's beautiful, and I'd hate to lose that location. And, you know, once we're gone, we're gone, and I'd hate to, as I said, I'd hate to see that go. So I'm done. That's it.
Thank you.
I, Eleanor, I kind of have a pee regarding how we honor the gangs in this, in this town. First of all, it's a false prophecy. And so long as we continue to acknowledge, you know, and give quote-unquote respect, and that's what you do when you say, you know, this gang controls this area, that gang controls that area. We have got to stop that. I don't know, change the language. I know, I understand what you're saying, but when we put that out there, it only makes them feel in control, for want of a better term. I, it's been years since I've actually seen a gang member or a gang cluster or whatever. And maybe I'm walking around blinders. I do have new glasses, but still, I, I don't think we need to go that route. No other district does that. In fact, I think there's some sort of solid agreement that, gentleman's agreement, that we not give acknowledgement to quote-unquote gangs. And I think, you know, Oceanside needs to be a part of that. You know, we are in control of the schools. We are in control of the school district. Not some Thank you.
Thanks, Eleanor. I, can I, go ahead, Eric?
If it's about that, that's fine. I just don't want to lose the.
Yeah.
No, go ahead.
It's only about that.
So I understand that, and I agree, we should be looking forward. But these words came from when a student was asked if they would attend, do they feel safe? And that's the, the safety of a student is, that's number one. And so I, you know, I agree, we should be doing everything we can, but that student will have to step off that campus. And, and if they're not comfortable doing that, they won't come to school. So, you know, I just think it's a major factor that needs to be, it feels like in scenario C, Surfside was an afterthought. And I know that our board, our, our leadership doesn't think of it that way. And I know that they don't feel that way, but in the, the way it's talked through, you know, Surfside is the last, and that's kind of the way that it's happened in the past as well, because I just think we just need to make sure we honor the students' voice.
So what I would recommend, just hearing those comments from Eric, and is, is the district needs to talk to the staff at Surfside? And not just the teachers, but the entire staff and have them go over and take a look at Del Rio? And, and just weigh out the pros and the cons and what best meets the safety and the student needs. I want to hear it from the people that work with those students, because I'm making an assumption before we decide to do that. I didn't weigh in on Reynolds because I'm completely biased, and my kid went to Reynolds. I drove him all the way across the district for that program. That school site has a dynamic that is very, very interesting. Even though it's dilapidated and outdated, it still has, it's full because of the staff over there and not just the TWBI program and where people live in that community. So me being over there for six years and being PTO president and sitting on school site council for three years, that community, that school needs to be invested in, and I'm kind of weighing in on that end and agreeing with Mike on that, and Eleanor, that that school is an investment. Is it, is it worth fifty million I, to put into it? I just know it's full, and it's full for a reason anyways. And so I'm kind of leaning towards that one. I'm also concerned about Surfside, because we know if we're going to remodel a site like we are with SLR, it never goes fast enough. There's such a process and red tape and all the things that I know our district works hard to get through. But it's, it's two, three, four years before Surfside sees any improvements to their site. And, you know, I hate making people wait for it. And my one question is for Reynolds, if we decide to make the investment into that Reynolds school, that, those students will be able to be on campus during that rebuild? Is that true?
We can bring.
It's a rebuild, not a remodel.
Right, we'd have to talk to the architect about that and bringing in modulators to house the students and to see if that would be an option to do that, to keep the kids on the same location.
And what we've done in the past with Libby and Pacifica was move kids out of Libby into Pacifica while Libby was being built, and then we moved them back. So is, I mean, just throwing it out for Reynolds, because it's not a remodel, it's a rebuild. Where would the students go?
Right, we would have a plan for that. Most likely, we'd bring on modulators to do that. But that's something that we would draft out to do.
And then speaking to each of the scenarios, Surfside absolutely was not an afterthought. The two campuses that we were trying to address were the ones with the greatest needs, which were Reynolds and Surfside. The, the Laurel and Mission was put in there as our, what we addressed is all of our smallest elementary school sites. When we looked at possibly giving the board scenarios for all school sites that were in close proximity to one another, we just abandoned it because they weren't even good ideas, because the school sites were either too big of populations or they wouldn't fit on a school. So we don't like the Laurel Mission either. We just showed that to you as another option of our smallest schools. So those are our two smallest schools, along with Del Rio and Libby. And so we can, we can agree, like, to throw that scenario out of the water. And so we just, again, Um, and so we just, again, we're looking for direction and, you know, if the board wants to abandon closing, um, any schools and doing any consolidation, you can abandon that as well. Um, we, we don't love consolidation. We don't love talking about boundaries. These are very difficult things for people, because there are people who are very emotionally attached to their school. I still love my elementary school. I remember every inch of it. Um, I would be very, you know, disheartened if it were to be consolidated with another school as well. So we get all of that. Um, this isn't work we want to do. This is work that we believe we need to do for efficiency sake. Uh, but we'll take whatever direction the board gives us. If you want us to abandon the idea.
Savings, they're cost savings to consolidating the schools a year.
A million dollars ongoingly as, uh, Andy went through those calculations, um, at our last, uh, study session. So that is why also we have more space than we need. Um, and, and there is that issue as we were almost, um, well, that, you know, we had a couple of years ago that, uh, if we have too much site at one, uh, too much space at a school site, uh, there is law that allows charter schools to come in and utilize that space. Um, so there's a lot of things to consider. Uh, we'll take the direction, uh, from the board i- in any way you, uh, want us to move.
And I would, I would ask that we table, so we have that, like Stacy asked to have that discussion with the Surfside teachers, so that we can actually hear, but not only from the teachers and all the staff, but including the students, because they're the ones that are going to have to do it. So I think that input from them, honest input from them, from our groups that work there, like TC and Resilience, our groups that also work with the students that, that deal with the students that are going to, that are ready, you know, having some issues and getting even just to this school site, so, um, or just don't get to school, period. So is it going to be an issue then if we move them again? Because like, you know, they've said already, it took a lot of work to get these schools together onto Ditmar camp, onto that Ditmar campus, that Ditmar site. And it took, it was a lot of work and it's still obviously a lot of work, because we still can't even get the portables there for the childcare. And that's taken how many years already that they've already been at this school site to get that to happen. And so I have that. And then I have the question of if the redo the remodel at Reynolds and we're going to have to put modulars, what is that additional cost then going to be? So we could get an answer. If I could get a response to what that cost would be in addition to everything also.
Were you, can I clarify? Did you mean modulars to go onto Del Rio?
No, on to Reynolds.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's similar to what we're doing now with SLR.
Fifty million dollar cost. Is it in the fifty million dollar number you threw out there, that aspect of it, you know?
Yeah, it's going to be similar where it's, it's, we have the same cost in SLR. We have modulars that are going to house kids while the campus is being modernized. Um, so I don't, I don't really understand the direction. Are you asking me to ask staff if they want to move to the Del Rio campus? And that's going to be the determiner? Is that the direction we're looking at here?
Oh, so Julie, can you? All right, so Julie, can you or, um, Dr. Norman, can you guys explain why you're recommending the third choice? Like your pros and cons, because you guys are giving us a recommendation. So I just want to make sure I have that clear.
Yeah, we can, we can, uh, tag team on this, Andy. So what we attempted to do was to address um, our two most in need schools, which are Surfside and Reynolds. Um, and trying to come up with di- different iterations of what addresses that. Also, which schools have had ongoingly declining enrollment? Um, Libby and Del Rio have ongoingly had declining enrollment, and they are our two smallest elementary schools. Reynolds has persisted to have continuous enrollment, similar to the numbers that they have now and are projected to continue with those, uh, enrollments. Um, so merging the two smallest elementary schools that are in close proximity, uh, to one another. And then, uh, moving Del, I'm sorry, moving Surfside to Del Rio, um, we thought was a beautiful solution, because that campus is gorgeous and was recently modernized. And it's right across the street from a transit center and the majority of our high school on campus students actually, you know, and this would change. This could vacillate from year to year, but they actually live closer to that campus than they do the Surfside campus. And then, uh, so what that would mean is if you still have to address Reynolds, which would be to modernize that campus. And if you, if you take that campus offline, you leave a complete area that's vacant um, with hundreds of homes out there, um, with no school, the closest walking distance, I think it was to, uh, Andy, I can't remember exactly. It was one point eight miles and one point seven miles. So that was, you know, one of the biggest considerations is that you have the longest walking distances if you take Reynolds off the map. Whereas the others, you, you have the longest walking distance at one point one miles. So those would be the, the persisting and it, it is a complex, you know, situation with the amount of money, but those are all the factors that we took into, and that's why we made the, uh, recommendation that we made. Do you want to add anything to that, Andy?
Sure, we looked at the sites that are currently not modernized. And when you, when you look at it years wise, we have Surfside from nineteen fifty-four and when we have Reynolds from nineteen eighty-seven, we could take care of those two sites. Um, all in one fell swoop. We do have Chavez, Fusad and Nichols who have not been modernized, but they are our newer facilities, some of our newer ones. That would leave Stuart Mesa, King Ivy and McCullough. So this solution allows us to take care of two sites and one of them immediately. Having been a principal that, um, was part of a merger, I inherited, um, students and I was more than happy to do so, but I, I will share that they had to be split and that created a lot of conflict within the school, because they had to go to multiple sites rather than what we're proposing, where we move everyone all together. And so everyone the next year is going to have their friends with them. They're going to have their teachers with them and we can keep everyone intact. I know that every culture is different at every school site and we do honor that. But in our effort with this plan, it's to keep everyone as intact as possible. And that also includes Surfside. And Surfside absolutely was not, um, something that we just threw in there. It was a very thoughtful decision. And in doing so, we would want to make sure that the campus is, uh, optimal for the staff and for the students and make sure that it is for older students as well as the elementary students that frequent that campus.
So my, here's, here's what I'm. I'm struggling a little bit with, well, I was going to offer one, one fact, I guess. And, and maybe we need another meeting to run through some of this stuff some more. I don't know. Um, you know, if Reynolds was twenty-five million, would you have a different response? Um, you know, I want to understand where this is coming from, because as Andy mentioned, through the schools that we have done already with bond money or the schools that we know the need to have renovations in the next ten to twenty years, these are the schools that need them. Um, the Surfside at Ditmar needs it. If we stay there, Reynolds would need it, the full build, rebuild. Reynolds got no bond money ever, because we didn't have bonds before in nineteen eighty-six. It was built with developer money. So yeah, the homeowners paid more for their house out there, but it didn't come out of the district bond pool. So there never was any district construction money in that, in that facility. So it's like, okay, now if we were doing that and building new, we've got to put fifty million in to build a brand new school. Where would you build a brand new school? Um, I don't see that as that much of a, of a problem at, at all to justify. Um, and that we still have a hundred million left to deal with the remainers of the, of the sites that need work, which was also articulated in there. Ivy needs a little bit, King needs a little bit, but they don't need rebuilding. None of the schools out there need rebuilding other than the, the Reynolds one. So it's me, it's about saving Reynolds. I mean, we want to, and, and consolidating the, the, the Libby-Del Aural thing as a cost savings issue over time. Um, maybe we just do that and we hold on Surfside and figure out a year from now whether we want to sell Del Rio's vacant site or put it to another use to a developer or move something else in there. Surfside or not, if we, if we explore Surfside more, but I'm, 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 I'm struggling. If the number was twenty-five at Reynolds, would we be having this discussion? As, as hardcore. And I want to try and get through that, because we do have a big pool of money. Yes, we worked hard for it. But we worked hard for it to get that bond passed, and it was to fix schools that are in need. And Reynolds is a very popular school, as alls are, but it's, it's had a thirty-year history of being the it's school. And investing our bond monies into it for the first time is not a sin. And I don't think we can be criticized for that. So.
And I believe it is both Reynolds and Surfside that are addressed in that fifty million. Am I?
Forty-nine million is just Reynolds. Um, we would move Surfside into Del Rio and then purchase furniture. And if there was anything else we needed to do. But that would, the cost for the Surfside removal was just, not removal, move was just two seventy-five. We were thinking for furniture.
But the way you're looking at it, Stacy, is both schools get addressed for that fifty million dollars, right? You get Surfside, almost a brand new campus and, uh, Reynolds as well. So that's a way to kind of look at it as well.
Yeah, I think that's the principle, totally.
Yeah.
And then.
That, that.
More money, got an, and a Ditmar that we can.
Does that extra thirty, so twenty million takes care of all of our students, right? If we're looking at students on a, on a, on a very fair basis, because in both C and B, we lose a school. We lose one school, one way or the other. We're losing a school. And in, in B, we lose a school, but we save thirty million dollars. All the kids have nice facilities. We could even drop in an extra five million to make sure that the upgrades to the facilities are really nice. The kids are going to. Um, I get that there are some factors with neighborhood issues that we, we should, we should take under consideration, but it's not just that it's the difference between twenty-five and fifty million. It's that when you spend that extra thirty million on this one site, there are things that are not going to happen in a couple of years when we go to spend the rest of the bond. Like Laurel will be on the part of that list too. And is Laurel going to get now pinched out the back of the bond? Because we spent thirty million extra on Reynolds. So the, the downhill, the downhill effects of this, I think we, this is the thing. One of the things that I would really love to have the conversation about looking at this as a whole in a conversation, listening to Surfside input on, on Del Rio actually being a realistic site from, for the kids. And then also, we talked a lot about walking distance, but we haven't looked at the boundary changes that we would do with C and B. So I would really like to know what that would look like and how that would adjust that longest walking distance or not adjust it. So I would ask, I would ask that we do another meeting where we go into the detail of these two scenarios, which we both agree have their own merits.
We do have the walking distance for our last scenario. That would be Del Rio going into Libby. And I, and I did want to share, um, you know, you, you talked about losing a school site. If, if the Surfside students go into Del Rio, that site still remains standing. It's still there. If we demolish Reynolds, then that site is truly gone. And so that's also a different, the structure of Del Rio would still be there.
But we lose Surfside.
We do lose Surfside, yeah.
So that's what I mean. There's a school in all of these scenarios where there's a school that's, we're losing.
Are we losing Surfside, that scenario? Are the students just being absorbed into a different school?
They would be moving into Del Rio and we would most likely demolish Surfside.
And so now we're, now we're getting into the equity conversation real, because now we're saying, okay, we're going to demolish the kids from Surfside School. Are we going to demolish the other school or, or this other school? So those are, those are equity-based conversations that I think we need to contextualize what we're talking about as well. So I, I would really like to go into some more details about this and hear back our partners. That would be my ask, um, moving forward.
You know.
I don't think you're going to. Help us.
Since twenty, let me, since twenty sixteen, when I came on the board, you know, I really felt that Reynolds should be rebuilt. It's, I don't know if you visit there, really seen the condition of the classrooms, but it's not a very inspirational place. I, I, I give kudos to the teachers who teach there and to the staff what they have to work with in terms of, of physical building. It's really pathetic. I mean, you can look up and you see the sky, you look down, you see the ground and you're inside a building. You go outside, the eaves are all, as I said before, termite eaten. You know, it's, it's pathetic. I've, it's, like I said, it's like something from a, uh, social justice movement of some sort.
Surfside has similar feeling to it. In fact, it had even worse score on our index. And that, and I'm not suggesting that we continue having students learn there indefinitely. That's why we, I think we need to have the full conversation about B. And so.
To segregate all of these decisions.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be knowing what more information we could be back. So the board's going to need to provide us more details. Um, between last, uh, month's study session and this month's, we don't really have any more information to offer other than, and if we're going to go to Surfside, I mean, do you want us to go to every school and talk about every scenario?
No, I think, I, I think our alternative high school has very unique qualifying conditions for where their site can be. And I think that, that's a very specific conversation. If Del Rio is not going to work, we should know that now. Um, so the other input would be the Surfside input, where we just talked about, that specific input about, is it a, is it a place that can work for that population of students? The boundary info, as in looking at, we had all the, the conversation that we had around B where this is how far the walking is if the kids just go TWI to one site and the rest of the kids go to the other side. I'm saying if we look at the boundaries after we, if we were to close Reynolds, the boundaries changing would have, it could have an impact on that walking distance to those sites. Does that make sense?
No, it, the reason it doesn't, and so help me understand, because the furthest, the student at Reynolds who lives the furthest away from Libby and Del Rio, we provided what that walk would be. And one is one point eight miles and one is one point seven miles. So we already have that information. I mean, how you divvy the kids up could be different, but there's still a cluster of kids that are furthest away. So, and the reason that we're trying to separate the boundaries, Eric, is because we can't, it, it, until we know what school sites are going to be existing, we really don't know how to have the boundary conversation. Um, so in talking about this and trying to figure out, you know, the boundaries, we just, until we know which schools are going to be in play and which ones aren't, we don't think we can engage in the boundary conversation.
So I thought we could have the conversation about the sites that we're talking about. So if we're talking about Reynolds going down, or if we're talking about Del Rio not being an elementary school, those two scenarios, we could work out the boundaries for the remaining two schools in the way that would work best.
They showed it to us essentially, Eric. It doesn't take a workout. You did, they virtually saw it, just eliminate, eliminate Del Rio's boundary. If you push them on to Libby and then, or absorb it into Libby, or if you, if you eliminate, if you eliminate, um, uh, Reynolds, then everybody goes to Libby and, and, uh, Del Rio. She just, the boundaries are the same. You know?
And then the other piece that I was. The other piece that I would ask that we talk about is, is the whole bond as, as in context and what our big needs are, because we do know these things. We have done this work, but it hasn't been part of this conversation. So I think we should know, if we spend an extra thirty million next year, what is the thirty million that goes out on the backend? And is that something that we can, that we can take? So I just think that that's part of our conversation as a, as a board.
I, I think the characterization that it's going out the backend is not a fair characterization, but you're, you're arguing against zero now. I'm arguing against.
Then we have a hundred and sixty. We have a hundred and sixty. If we're going to spend an extra thirty million on this front project, then there's not going to be thirty million on another project. It's just, I mean, we only have a hundred and sixty.
And I think for that, yeah, and I think, sorry Eric, I think in that conversation that we're looking at that, um, because we talked about, like Eleanor just said, though, we have school sites that you walk on them and they're not inviting. They're not beautiful. I mean, you look at Jefferson and all the needs that they had. You look at Laurel, you look at multiple sites. You look at what Garrison used to be, what SLR used to be. Many of our school sites need love and attention, many of them. And that's because previously they were not taking care of the way that they should have. And now we're, we work for this hundred and sixty million dollars to be able to do that. And it's not something that's going to be only around, like, we, we only have so much money. It's only a hundred and sixty million dollars and it seems like an awful lot of money. But that thirty million dollars, which is like what Eric is saying, I have a big issue, because if we're not willing, we didn't spend that much on every school site. I mean, we put a lot of money. I look at the pack. We've put a lot of money into the pack and it's just sitting there. We haven't been able to use it. We don't use it the way I think we should be using it within the city. There's so many things with that, because we can't, there's no parking on that facility at all for any type of work. So you're looking at that, you need to still put parking at that school site to be able to utilize that pack the way that it needs to be, to be able to have things and events at that school site the way that you can. So when we look at thirty million dollars, I look at thirty million. So when we look at thirty million dollars, I look at thirty million dollars, it's just like Eric said, going out the backside because we didn't, we're not doing anything with it, except for putting it all into one school. Where we could put thirty into one, thirty into another. So you're fixing two sites instead of just one.
And when you, and when you go and close Reynolds, you lose two hundred and fifty kids to Bonzel or Charter or wherever. What's that add up to?
But who's to say that we're going to not lose, that we're going to lose them? They're going to two beautiful sites already. Because you're, they're already, those campuses are not bad sites. They're amazing sites. And so they're already, they've, they're fixed.
Thirty, been the most popular school for thirty years in Oceanside and most, well, it's most sought after school in Oceanside for thirty years.
But we're not going by popularity. We're going by what the equity, because we're trying to, we've done so much in trying to make all of our schools become equitable. And building them to be what they need to be, because they were not, again, they were not that in the past. And we're doing that now. We have done some serious work in these years that we've been here as a group. Is this, this board has done, we've done some amazing work and we're not done. And so to just throw so much money into one site when there's so much more to do overall. When you look at overall, what needs to be, be done at every school site. Cause again, there's, we don't even know like where we're going to find mold under certain places, just like when they started with the TRX. They didn't know what they were going to find. And then they found all this stuff. So we keep putting more money and more money and more money into things that are being found at these sites and we're never going to get done. And then we're not going to have the money, because in the end, we only spent fifty million dollars on this site, thirty million dollars more than we should have, because we could have put it somewhere else. And I think.
It's a full rebuild. It's not a remodel. SLR is a remodel, because we couldn't.
It's, it's a, it's a remodel because it was built correctly to begin with. It was some substantial bones to it. Reynolds was a throw up developer, uh, modulators with no structure to it, no substance to it. That was the way you did stuff in the eighties, because the place was growing like crazy. And so that's why no investment of the community's money, bond money went into Reynolds, ever.
Back in the eighties, they bought those houses, knowing that they had a school, Reynolds there. That's why they paid those developers those fees. So I, I'm all for investing in Reynolds at this point, but I want to hear from Surfside, Dr. Vitale about the possibilities with, um, Del Rio. And what that would look like. I, I want to fully get into that with the whole staff, but not just the teachers, the whole staff. Looking at that and like Raquel said, possibly bringing in the high school students input on that as well.
Yeah, that makes it the easier to clarify stuff. I mean, we can do that and we come back with the, these decisions. You know, or I'd separate out and just do, so tell you to go full forward right now with Reynolds.
So here's the.
Work on, work on that, work on the other ones, um, as, as they unveil themselves, the consolidation with Del Rio. If it's problematic, um, to everybody, then maybe we don't do it yet. Um, and work the stuff with Surfside and Del Rio site and this, and how they feel about it. But I think we should move forward with the, with the Reynolds site.
If, if we don't have a, if we don't have a plan for the others, then this won't be fifty million. This will be seventy million. Cause then we'll have to upgrade Surfside too. And then, you know, then we really have spent a large portion of the fund. So I just, that's why this context of, of what we're doing as a long-term facility master plan makes sense to me.
Lay, lay out everything we're going to spend a hundred and sixty million on and want to see it now before we spend a dime.
No, not everything. No, not everything.
Or before you pay thirty million.
Okay, I'm not wasting. There's definitely no wasting. Love you Reynolds. I love all of our school sites. I just want to be very clear. Now, I don't think any money spent on a school site is a wasted thing. But it does something that we do need to take very carefully. And if we're looking at, I know that we have an idea about what, I mean, I can pull up OUSD plan right now and I could do this. And I don't have everything done already, but what MLK is going to cost? Is MLK going to cost us about fifteen million to remod? I mean, we have, we know the ideas about things that we are going to have to spend money on. So it would really night, be nice to have a, an idea about the things that we need to do over the next five to ten. To know that if, if we are really spending more on this plan, this thirty million, that it does have an impact of the later half of the bond. I just don't, yeah.
Just for reference for the later half of the bond, we do get our second issuance in two years.
Yeah, what, 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 we need to go through to get, to get unanimity here, possibly. We need to have staff give us that plan layout and spend all that one sixty and we're going to find out that in fact, if we didn't, if you didn't think about Reynolds costing that much when the bond went forward, um, so be it, but it is what it is. How do you build a half? Should we build another half ass school? Like, you, you still modular school there. Let's do a twenty million dollar school. Can we do that?
We're talking about putting modulators in other sites. That's kind of another question, like adding these modulators to other sites. Are they going to be ones that need to be torn all the way down? Like Reynolds needs to be torn down. I think these are conversations, I, 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 yeah, I just think we need to have a more full conversation. That would be my ask.
Some of the increased cost of, of Reynolds is that we have cost acceleration into the, into the potential budget. And that's why it seems even larger than it, it may be in present day, depending on when we get through programming and design. And then for the modulators, we'd want to, we'd want to choose what allows for the fewest number of modulators or none. That would be ideal.
I'll just weigh in. I'm concerned those parents at Reynolds, I will not, they will not. They're not going to send their kids to Libby or Del Rio, that they're going to end up leaving our district. I, they will.
I would support Stacy's motion for her direction to, to staff to, uh, get with Surfside and, uh, the, the option C there and have some conversations with the, the Surfside folks and the Del Rio folks. And float this thing out there and see what, see what's out there. Let's, let's, let's take that step.
Is there a first part to that motion regarding Reynolds?
No, there's no vote tonight, actually, right? We're just giving direction.
No, we're, we're just looking for, um, direction. So the only thing I. Go ahead.
You got three of us that say they like Reynolds full on for right now and move forward with that. And I can support the conversations with Del Rio and the conversations with Surf, Surfside to see if they can feel comfortable at Del Rio. My assumption is that, um, we should probably talk to OPD too, or quietly talk to folks in that TK and, uh, TC consultants and see what their sense is about, uh, the, the feelings in the back gate versus, uh, the Dipmar site for the Surfside and what dangers there might lurk there. But that, that would be good research for us to do. You want to have conversations for staff to have. Um, we don't need to be involved with it, but staff needs to come to grips with that and give us some feelings about how people feel about these things, as you kind of laid out.
And Eric mentioned the bond. So where does this play into the entire bond budget?
So we have our allocation now of fifty million dollars. And our next allocation will be received in approximately eighteen to twenty-four months. That will be fifty million dollars. We have a twenty-three million dollar project in the queue right now, uh, with Prop H that is re, uh, that is modernizing Jefferson. Um, and we have SLR in the queue and that's a twenty million dollar remod, I believe, Andy, and that's also with Prop H. Um, so we can't take on too many more projects, but, um, if we took on a, an additional modernization, um, if, if the board moved in that direction, whatever it might be. But did I, so Stacy, we have the fifty million right now in, in the bank account that we have in Oceanside. And, um, our next allocation will be received in eighteen to twenty-four months and that will be fifty million dollars.
I think what Eric was asking for, and I'll let Eric speak for himself, but more of a long-term, long-term type budget plan for that money, all of it. So we're not spending too much now and not thinking about the future. Am I correct, Eric?
Yes. So when we're, when we, I remember when we first were talking about the old bond. And my conversations were I wanted to make sure that there was equitable spending, which means we were hitting the school sites that, that have not only the most need of a, a, a school site facility, but also students that have the most need. Because, um, you know, we hear different, um, levels of voices from different school sites. And so I don't want us to gauge it on that. I would like to see our, our full scope of need. I know we have a beautiful website that has a lot of data on it. So I think as a board, I think we should have some conversations about that as a whole.
I, I think potentially we'd have to come up with different scenarios based on the direction we were given. If you would prefer that we go with, um, rebuilding Reynolds, then that leaves a different amount of money to be allocated. So it really from tonight, we were hoping then we could start our plan for what we would potentially do in the future with the bond funds. But what you're asking for now, and we can certainly do this, you know, anything's possible. We could come up with some different scenarios and if thens for how we could prioritize, but we also wanted to make sure that that direction came from the board. That it's not the district telling the board what we need to be doing, but utilizing the long-range facilities master plan. So that you could also give us direction on what you feel the community needs most as well.
So that, that conversation is the one that I, I am curious about, because we haven't given direction about the broad basis of the, of the bond. And now we're going to see over a third of it, probably, possibly more than a third of it. Um, on one project already without having given direction.
So it's just about which, which order you want to go in, right? So we were asked to bring in consolidation plans and address this, um, again, from our FICMET study that was done a couple of years ago. Um, these are the difficult conversations that we have. But if the board wants to take a completely different approach to the bond money and go through what you believe are priorities and not address consolidation. I mean, those are options.
Yeah, I, I, I'm trying to get there. Well, based on our last statement, then, um, Reynolds would definitely be the priority. But one of the factors that we really need to think about in terms of money in the bank is the spending caused in terms of inflation. The longer we push this into the future, the less money we're going to have in real dollars to be able to build anything. So we really need to take that into consideration. And then this other thing about neighborhood issues. This is where our social emotional learning, um, curriculum comes into play. It should be embedded into the, every single classroom. Um, that shouldn't even be an issue for us at, at this point. I really think, you know, like, we really need to push that.
Okay, so I kind of want to hear from each board member, which option you're leaning towards right now. I know we need more information. We just gave direction to Dr. Vitali and Dr. Norman. So I, I'm just curious from each board member, which, which option you're leaning towards right now. I'll start with Mike, since he's in my far corner, and I'll just work around.
Option C, um, staff's approach, I'm willing to go down that road. I think Reynolds needs to be done. If you guys want to delay the other stuff and keep talking about it, that's fine, but I think Reynolds needs to be done.
Okay, all right. Raquel?
Um, I think I go with B, but I think my concern is if we put a whole thing of like, well, we're going to spend a hundred and sixty million dollars, if we put it out on paper, it's going to be exactly what would happen with W, that things are going to happen and not happen. And then that conversation is going to happen within different schools of what already is currently happening with W. Is that my school didn't get fixed and you screwed us over again. So, um, those were not good conversations to have as a board member and I don't want to have them again. So I think putting a whole long list of hundred and sixty million dollars, I think I have a little bit of issue of. But, um, figuring out what our most current with the, with the fifty that we're going to pull now and then the next fifty that we're going to pull. I think having that conversation in a plan, um, would work for me. And, um, I still have an issue with, again, initial fifty million. Cause like I, you know, if it wasn't fifty million, if it was twenty-five million, I wouldn't have such a big, um, thing with it, but I do. Um, so that's where I'm at.
Okay, thanks Raquel. Eric?
I would just say, I, 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 I can't support A or C and I would like to know more about B. I mean, that's, that's where I'm at. And as far as like going a long list of everything, I definitely don't think we should allocate, like, set up the allocation now. But I would like to know, like, if MLK is going to cost twenty million. I would just like to have an idea about things that we know for sure need to come up soon. Rather than it be a complete opaque picture on the backend of things. So I would just think that as a, as a board, we should have some of that conversation, but definitely not the whole one sixty. I agree, that would be irresponsible to do just at one time.
Thanks Eric. And Eleanor?
Option C.
Okay, and I go for option C. I know that area in Reynolds. It's my trustee area. I walk those streets. I know them. And I, I want to invest in Reynolds, so.
All right.
So Stacy, I, I'm not sure. I want to be clear on the direction. I, I feel like, uh, the direction right now is just to talk to the Surfside staff to get their thoughts and input and share that feedback, uh, with the board. And then that's if that has any impact on your preference or, or not. And also talk to the Oceanside Police Department, uh, which we did, but we'll do again. Um, and then do you want us to talk to the other, uh, staffs as well? Are we just going down that? How soon do you want this to be brought back? Do we want another study session? Um, these, these presentations, this one, uh, combined with my time in Andy's, uh, took about eighty hours. Um, and that's not an exaggeration at all. So please take that into consideration when you're thinking about the timeline of, uh, when you want us to bring back this information and in what format.
And just timing wise, we do have time, because these won't happen for, you know, a while, right? We're doing this because we wouldn't even get it, the allocation for two years and then we would, yeah.
No, option C, uh, we were planning on, uh, instituting that next year, August twenty twenty-two. Uh, because there's so, the, the movement that's involved would be done all during summer and it doesn't require any, um, uh, portable buildings or any modulators to be built. So no, we are looking at that next school year again, to try and bring that consolidation and that million dollar and ongoing savings to fruition as soon as possible.
Can we, we, sorry. Did we ask, um, did we have any communication with any of the staffs from Libby? And or, um, Del Rio to see like what they thought of any of this? Because now the first, they're going to obviously have to move and they're the ones that are going to have to do it all. And so I just wonder if we've given any, any, gotten any feedback from them on what they are thinking.
The place we start is with the Board of Education. Uh, so no, we did not bring any of these, um, decisions or, um, conversations or scenarios to the staff. For example, you've taken Laurel and Mission, uh, off the table. I hear that, I heard that one pretty loud and clear. So we wouldn't have wanted to preemptively worry, worry them and talk to them about that. Um, but we're happy to go and talk to the staffs and get their inputs. Um, I can, uh, I probably have some ideas about what they might say. Uh, but we're happy to bring that information back, uh, to the board unfiltered. And, um, yeah, we're happy to talk to staff. If, if you want us to talk to community members as well, I just don't like to talk in one ifs, because it just gets people very upset. Um, but we can certainly do that.
You were asking, three of us support C, which was go out and talk to all these communities. Um, you know, that was, that's, three of us have said that. I, I understand some reticence now if we don't. Um, you know, if you're trying to get unanimity here, um, but the, all of us want you, I guess, to, to see what they think about it. Um, unless we're going to not just abandon it, you know, on, in terms of the consolidations and on it, you know, and.
Got it. So, so talk to the various, um, complete staffs in scenario C about that option. Since that seems to have the majority, is that what I'm hearing? And then talk to the Surfside staff about how they would feel about going to Del Rio, Del Rio to Libby and then Reynolds.
A hard decision by us anyway, now it's giving you direction and.
Right.
I mean, what, on your timeline, you showed you'd go out and meet with the community groups in September, right? And then something back to us.
September and October.
October rather.
Yeah, yeah, October. September is very limited. Yep.
If, or November if we.
Yep.
But I, I, I mean, I, I think we all would like to know, I don't think Eric or Raquel in terms of the consolidation issues are not unwilling to hear that. Um, or no, I, I, am I missing that? They want other things to. They want other things to be, to be laid out there in terms of seeing what the big, where the next big hundred million is, where, where that needs to be spent. I guess that's what we kind of need to know on the QT. Where's that hundred million going to go if we spend fifty on Reynolds? That's the magic question for Eric and Raquel.
Yeah, so we can get that, Andy, by going through the long-range facility master plan. So for every school, there's various scenarios and various amounts of money that can be spent in those scenarios. Um, so we can start spending time and going through that and saying, I mean, it's, it's in the long range. We can put it all in one place. So it would say like for MLK. You know, for this option, this is what you get and this is how much it'll cost. For this option, this is what you get and this is how much it'll cost. So yeah, we can bring that and you already know that there's more that needs to be done in the long-range facility master plan than we have, but I think you all know that. But then also take into consideration that we have some properties that are out there that will also generate revenue, uh, that we have in the queue right now. So in addition to the bond money, we do have. Um, property that is being sold that will also generate revenue. So that's, that's a nice thing that we have going as well. So, okay, we'll talk to the, uh, school communities about, uh, the various scenarios. Um, so we'll take the rest of September and October to do some of that.
Can you bring that back to us at our October board meeting?
No, I, I don't think we can get it done that quick, Stacy. I want to be honest. I appreciate that, um, but we'll either. Schedule another study session or bring it back in, uh, November, either one of those. If we can, we'll. We'll look at our calendars and their calendars as well and try and get that done as soon as possible, but I believe that meeting is only, uh, a week and a half away or two weeks away.
Right.
Yes.
I, I have a question. I have a question. Uh, with the bond money, have we, um, built in inflationary factor? Because the more we push this forward, you know, if inflation rising, the less, as I said before, the less dollars. Really do exist. You know, this fifty million dollar school will be seventy million dollars if we keep pushing it forward because of inflationary factor.
You're correct. We, um, anticipated if it were to be Reynolds built within the timeframe of deciding, you know, within the next few months, if Reynolds were to go forward, it would still be a few years out. And that's factored in. And these are estimates. We haven't, you know, walked with an architect yet and, and really talked it through. DLR had one proposal, but it would depend on from the pool of architects we have. What their proposals are. We'd walk the site and see the needs and, and see how we wanted to build it. I mean, trustee Joyce and Alvarez have been on the committees where we're building Jefferson and SLR and there's. Lots of options out there in terms of how we can build school sites.
Maybe we can build it cheaper.
DLR has it listed at fifty-six million on the five-year. I don't know if that's because it's.
Correct. The, the number I got was from our bond office, CCM Moss. I asked for if it were to be something that were, were built a little bit sooner. She estimated about forty-nine million, but those are just estimates.
Well, that's what we're going to be dealing with.
It goes without saying, um. Dr. Vitali and Dr. Norman, um, will you please work with our labor partners in setting up those meetings? With those, those sites. That way we get, uh, they're, um, unedited. And.
Yeah, we won't edit. Absolutely.
Okay, cool. All right. Are we done for this evening? Or do we have more?
Yes.
It's okay. Go ahead.
The other two recommendations were to leave all the elementary school boundaries alone. So the elementary school boundaries in the, uh, Crown Heights area are very strange, so to speak. And so I would love it if we. Did some community outreach to those communities and found out if they would prefer to change them so that they have a unified neighborhood going to a school or two schools. Instead of three, because there's three that all come together, right? That same spot. One side of the street you go to. Punk was the other side of the street, you go to Mission or, no, not Punk, but you go to South Mission or Laurel. And so I, I've heard from that community that. They're asking to at least have that conversation.
Yeah, what we're really asking for on boundaries is if we can wait till January to begin that work. Um, and we agree with you. That's a, that's a weird little slice out. We just, we're trying to take in the scope of all the things that we're managing, um, still amidst the pandemic. So we're just asking for a little delay so we can set up proper committees and get the proper input, um, because boundaries are very, very, um. All-inclusive. So we would just like to, to delay that till January and get a proper process in place.
Okay, I didn't realize that January was as soon as you took it out. That's, that's great. And, and there might be a, a happy solution brought forward by the community. So just. That in mind. And then, uh, the middle school boundaries, which sounds like we're. Going forward with which I'm.
Yes, we just want to begin all boundary conversations in January.
And, and even, and they take a while to do. I, I'm worried about bandwidth because we have a lot of projects. And direction that we've been giving, not just around this issue, but about the equity work that we're. Moving forward as well as special education and inclusive practices. So I, I'm trying to narrow the focus so we do. A few things really well, than having them spread too thin. And like Julie said, the pandemic on top of it and what's going on at our site. With personnel, staff, independent studies is, and quarantines and isolation is causing a lot of stress. So. January, I think would be anyways, soon.
In, in your conversations with our community and, and partners. Could you be sure to bring up their thoughts on making a school site, a TWBI school site? Because the, the idea of building a culture, a bilingual culture of a whole site. I think there's some, there's some very positive aspects to that and, um, I think that even more than, than, uh, what we have now. That would be, if that was like the school's banner to take up, I think we could even pull more kids in, uh, than we do now. So. Just as a thought, moving forward, since we're moving and changing things, usually we do the changes at the same time. That way. We all settle in at the same time. It would have to start with the kinder, first kinder class coming in. But if the entire site was TWBI, I think that'd be something pretty special. So just something that I'd love to hear from you.
And there is actually a lot of conversation about that since we're remodeling and, and doing different things within the school. So. There is actually a lot of conversation about that currently going on.
All right. Are there any other comments, thoughts from my board colleagues?
Not for me.
All right. I don't see anything else on the agenda. So I, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at six fifty PM. Meeting adjourned.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night. Thanks for the dialogue.
Good night.
Thank you. Got my booster. I'll be sick tomorrow, probably.
Well, at least.
Oh, I'm, I don't feel bad at all. So I haven't felt bad from these before. So I hope, knocking on wood.